All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:15 and today is Thursday, October 5th. Meeting of the Brookfield Select Board. Please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Announcements today. One, this meeting is being recorded. Also, can I make an announcement that's not on here?
Yes.
I just want to remind everyone that the Apple Country Fair is this Saturday. So please bring your umbrella and enjoy the fair and try not to curse too much at the traffic in the village when it happens. Let's see, Brad, could we get a report on the warrants?
Yep. Warrants, FY 2406, 06A, payroll $748. FY 2406A withholding $73.36. FY 2407 accounts payable $67,990.16. FY 2407 payroll $202,518.45. FY 2407 withholding $32,605.7 cents.
Thank you, Brad. All right, that brings us to our agenda. The first on the agenda is interviewing a candidate for Veteran Service Officer Ellen Moore. Being the only person I don't know here, Ellen, I'm guessing you are. All right, would you please come up and join us? All right. Lucky me, my first hire as a candidate interview as a chair. So please bear with me as I work through this. Let's see. Yes, ma'am?
Just wait.
Sorry. I see that look on my wife going, "What are you doing?"
Oh, no, that's just me trying to like, like, deal with the fact that I have to look over the glasses. So there's no intended body language.
Thank you. All right, so let's see. So Ellen.
I do have a copy of my resume and all of the paperwork. I didn't know if you had copies or if you're all set.
Let's see. I believe I have a copy of your resume. I have a copy of some questions for you and I have a copy of some. Kelly, question for you. Are we looking, I saw some legality around here around a district. Are we looking to form a district of other towns? Are we just looking to coordinate hire? But every town hires the Veterans Agent directly?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's no district involved? Okay, thank you.
When they did the planning for this, I understand that it's the fact that there's so few clients, if you will, so they were trying to group the towns together. I don't think, I think legally you have to go through the Veterans Association to make it a regional. Again, I'm not a lawyer or a...
The important thing is we find a way to serve the veterans.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess the first question is, why do you want the job?
Well, I've been, I spent 24 years in the military and then the next seven as DOD employee at Westover Air Reserve Base. And I did, excuse me, this is what I did for the best part of the 24 years in the military, only for active members. So, you know, everybody likes to retire and take their money and run, which I did. But I wanted to find something to keep me young and active, if you will, and I found it very fitting. I have a friend, Holly Kilarzki, who's the Veteran Services Officer up in North Brookfield. So she came to one of the retirement dinners. We got talking and the Veteran Services Officer for the town of Chicopee, he was my first sergeant at one point. So the two of them, the three of us got talking and I feel that it's a great fit for me to continue doing what I did for the last 31 years.
Okay.
So it sounds like, and I'll take the second question if you don't mind, Tom.
No, go ahead.
So it sounds like, and as I'm reading through this with your resume, what period of time are you referencing that kind of aligns on similar like to the veterans' benefits and services work? It sounds like you're saying that a lot of the work that you were doing for active duty
Correct.
was, or for the reservists on base.
Right. So what my job was, whether it be the administrative part or the civil engineering operations, my responsibilities were to prepare the reservists in every aspect, whether it be their medical records, whether it be their financial records, whether it be supporting their families when they're gone. All of those things, that's what I did 24/7. And I mean literally 24/7. And their training records, just making sure that they were always ready, prepared, and secured when they went out, when they came back.
Okay, great. And my understanding is that there's training that's specific to this work? So, and you're going to be available to attend that training?
Yes. I've already discussed that with Gary, matter of fact, Monday or Tuesday. We're going to set it up where I sit with him just to get to know the clients, the veterans, the, understand the program and what have you. And I'm willing to go at no expense to any type of training so that I'm ready the day Gary retires. Like I said, if I wasn't doing this, I'd be volunteering for Project New Hope or one of those organizations so I could keep doing the same thing. So I have no problem with. And in my administrative position, I worked with computer programs that were military-specific. So I did take a look at Gary's. I think I was here, somebody, I was here with Gary and going, looking at the program and it seems very simple. The only thing, that issue that I ran into or whatever is knowing the process of how you, your people reimburse or that type of situation where I have to submit to the state.
Yeah, so there's a whole like series of documentation and paperwork because there's two ends of the finance when you're dealing with Veterans Agent for the local communities. There's the submitting the vouchers that you need for the treasurer and accountant to cut the check and then there's the other half of it to make sure that you file all the proper paperwork. So what winds up happening is in the follow-on year from a municipal finance perspective, like we allocate the funds and then we get a reimbursement the following year basically.
Right, so he wasn't able to show me that. That was the only part that I didn't understand or didn't have a chance to review.
Right, and that's something a town accountant can help with as well because they're part of that whole process and filing that paperwork at the end of the year.
Yeah. In my last seven years, I was the financial officer for my unit, my group, I should say, directly with the group commander. So I had to take fiscal law and a lot of the financial...
Type of training.
Right, CBTs, we call them, computer-based trainings or whatever. So I have a good idea of funding processes, whether it be Congress or...
Or local state.
Right.
Got it. Awesome.
All right, and then, let's see. So you understand you'll need to meet with the individual veterans?
Yep.
Okay. And is that something you've done, and is that something you've done before or?
Well, I dealt with the active duty members, or the active members, I should say. The active members, one-on-one, whether it be to help them with their financial, their educational benefits, their training records, what have you, their medical records. So I've been one-on-one with the reservists on a regular basis. So it'd be just, like I said, picking up where?
Where you left off.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable leading veterans' observances?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That was a big part of the activity that we did at Westover, whatever it be. Veterans Day ceremonies, is that what you're talking about? Veterans Day ceremonies, parades, and that type of activity, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think the biggest veterans-oriented observers in town is, I think we have, is on Memorial Day. But that means we have scope for others.
Right. But working with the three towns, how do you determine which event would be requiring my...
So typically, our cultural council manages most of the Memorial Day observances. But where you could really help us out is I think we've done a poor job historically doing outreach to get veteran participation in the Memorial Day observances. So a lot of it would be is once you connect with the community, seeing what you can do to convince folks to come out and represent fundamentally. More so than, you know, marching in the parade. It's more that kind of making certain that people feel comfortable, that they're truly wanted and that it really is in place for them to recognize the folks that they served with that, you know, may not have made it back.
Well, I belong to the American Legion. I am transferring from my post in Springfield to the post in North Brookfield. I just haven't been able to catch the commander of it. Tie him down to hand him over the paperwork. Other than that, I do plan on transferring. And once you're a member of one, you can go to, you're welcome at all. So I could encourage and...
Through that, yeah.
Yes.
That'd be great.
We did do an event for the National Night Out in North Brookfield and I assisted Holly while she was recruiting, if you will. And while we were there, we recruited two people that didn't know that she was the Veteran Services Officer and that they were...
Eligible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion that we appoint Ellen T. Moore as our Veterans Agent.
Second. Okay. Is that an indefinite appointment or is this position a, is there, does it require reappointment or is it until the board decides otherwise?
So historically, one year has been a Veteran Services Officer. The town is typically separated from the one until November 2nd.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
You can get your hands on a good one.
All right, and that's fine. I think we have a good one, too. I just wanted to stay with the company.
Well, so if you want to make it, if you want to, if you want to just make it a hire, or even one or two, basically it's just open. I don't know that there was a statute that has to be a certain term.
I'm comfortable with this. It's like, I think I just put a placeholder in six months to come down and review it just to make sure that we're, that everything's working smoothly?
Well, I'd probably more than likely be meeting with you monthly because, so that you...
Know what's going on and...
Right.
Then that's fine.
So if I, right. And if I run into a problem, so under normal circumstances, everything would go smoothly. But you might have a honorary client, veteran, that the process isn't working fast enough. So if I felt that they were going to kick up a dirt storm, I'd let you know. Or if somebody wasn't eligible for something, I'd let you know. So I'd like to meet with you monthly, whether it be just here at your meetings.
Is there any confidentiality issue with veterans of the veterans? How do you let them know?
Well, it depends on what this, there is confidentiality. It's, we'd be following HIPAA rules when it came to anything medical. So if they're getting reimbursed for a prescription or a doctor's appointment, whatever the case may be, there are HIPAA laws that we have to follow. And yes, I'd need space to talk because sometimes they might not want anyone to know that they're struggling financially. So if they needed heat assistance or anything, so. But I'd be able to judge on the most part what I could or couldn't release. But confidentiality is important, whether it be for their self-esteem or self...
To respect their privacy.
Right. And also letting you know that if there was any type of issues.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. I'm good. So all in favor of hiring Ellen as the Veterans Agent, please say aye.
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 Opal Ward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary's until November 1st, I believe.
He should be effective November 1st.
Yes. I believe Gary, Gary...
I apologize. No, I forgot to.
Gary was...
Do I need to amend that? I can, we can, we, let's amend, so we can't amend it because we already voted it, but...
Can we vote to clarify that it was effective November 1st?
Let me make a motion to rescind the original vote.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of rescinding the original vote for a purpose of correction, say aye.
Aye.
And then let's get a new motion. Let's, to appoint Ellen Moore as the Veterans Services Agent as of 1 November, effective 1 November 2023.
Second. All right. All in favor of that latest motion, say aye.
Aye.
And I understand that Gary is, has identified some training sometime in October. It sounds like it's in-person training.
Yep.
And so I think that's important. I think Gary was saying that affects our reimbursement rate.
Yep.
Yes.
Issues, so.
Right.
Are you already scheduled to do that since you've already been hired by West Brookfield?
I have been because Ron was looking into some of his must-sees and I went to Ireland for a couple of weeks. So, and that was all I was thinking about for the last month, so. But I was to get together with everybody once these decisions were made and set up anything and everything that they need because I also have to do paperwork for tax purposes, what have you, town administration...
You have to meet with the treasurer and the charter people.
Right, right. So, so once I had the go for all three towns...
You don't need to go for all three. You're being hired individually by each town.
Okay, so Ron...
So you can start with Ron as soon as you and Ron have time to do it. You can start with us as soon as you have time.
Okay. And so would I deal with you in the paperwork end or?
It would be the treasurer, who is Amy.
Amy?
She's here Monday through Thursday from 8:00.
Okay. But I could look that up online when she's available and phone, make an appointment with her. Okay? If there's anything else, you have my phone number, I believe it's on there. My address is not correct on here because I was sending these all out before I moved. I moved to North Brookfield. I live on Summit Street, uh, Summit Terrace.
That's what's here.
Oh.
You've got the corrected one.
Good. Well, thank you very much. Everybody have a nice evening.
All right, thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the, is Don Taft with the High Water No Wake on South Pond and then also the Pine Lane Skating Rink and is Alan Treatment Update. So let's take those in order, Don. How are you doing today?
Yep, I'm doing good. I'm doing good.
So I didn't think we'd have high water again before we had a chance to discuss this.
I know that. But we have.
Yes.
So I know that Kelly is working with the state to get the Attorney General to approve the bylaw.
It's actually the Mass Environmental Police.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a, that's a different process. So, you know, I don't have any questions with that. What I wanted to do was kind of the mechanics. To start with, the town has the bylaw at 601 feet, but it's never been identified. So it needs to be surveyed. It should be marked. And I went down yesterday and marked it with a spray can. It's proximate, it's not surveyed in. But I marked it as, at the high water marks at both boat ramps and the water was at the edge of Quabog Street, which I think is probably what established the 601 feet. So anyway, if you go down there, there are two marks on each ramp in approximately that location.
One ramp on each pond, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. But, so there's a couple of things that I think need to be kind of ironed out and I can talk with Kelly or we can work some, something out. The Lake Association is more than willing to help monitor this or let you know what water levels are because we monitor that on a regular basis anyway. And we also have probably about a 15-year history of knowing when you get an inch of rain, how long it's going to take that to reflect in the water level of both lakes. So we'll be glad to work with that and let you know. It's kind of the process of who do we notify? How do you want us to notify it? And again, I can, I can work that out with Kelly. But that's some of the, the mechanics of how the process is going to work. And how, I question how the town will notify the public or the state or boaters. Now, on Sunday, Saturday, when the water level rose to 601 feet, there were 17 boats, trailers in the boat ramp between the two ponds. So a total of about 17. And two more arrived while I was leaving. So I don't know how those people will be notified of a high water, no wake situation or who will enforce it, but that's part of the agreement with, with the state. But...
Are we allowed to put like a barrier, like a temporary barrier?
That's, that, I would, I would guess that you probably can, but that's something that you would have to be sure that is approval, approval by the state that you can, you can mark it. That, that's part of that agreement. So however that works.
Well, and I, and I have a couple of questions. I mean, it's not, the problem isn't necessarily that people are using the lake during high water periods. It's their behavior when they're using it and making sure they're aware that the rules are in effect. Correct?
In any, any, when the water gets to 601, like many of the docks right now, and we're slightly below the 601 high water mark, I'm going to say that most of the docks are underwater. And, and so when you have a wake, it's disrupting private property, it's damaging the docks and so on and so forth. So, yeah, it's, and it, everybody needs to know. I mean, we let the Lake Association people know, but we don't have a mechanism for notifying, you know, the people that are arriving at, to use the lake on a, on a day use basis. Or a fishing club, like if there's a special use permit, they probably ought to be notified that it's a no-wake situation as well. That's kind of the, kind of the mechanisms that I think we need to look at to put in place.
Are we allowed to have like movable sign, as part of the agreement? I think we're allowed to put some signage up. So I mean, we could put like a flip sign that indicates the conditions and just put a lock on it and, you know, kind of like the chief's got his...
Didn't the state come and take down the signs last night?
I'm sorry?
I thought the state came and took down the signs.
So what happened was, I think it was July 3rd and I went down and I posted that there was, there just eight and a half by 11 orange signs that high wake, high water, no wake. The state found out about it and that's when they said, "Well, we're the only ones that can do that. You can't do that." So that's why this time, this time I did nothing. I mean, I sent you an email to let you know that the situation had occurred, but I didn't, I didn't post, I didn't post anything, so.
Kelly, what are we coordinating with the DEP? Because we already have the bylaw on the books.
So any bylaw that affects or impacts a great pond, and this is a great pond, has to be brought before the U.A., certified vote, has to be approved by the Attorney General, but it does not take effect until the chief of the Massachusetts Environmental Police approves it.
Okay.
Our bylaw has been sitting with the environmental police for a while. I didn't, I was only aware that this hadn't been done recently. So as soon as I got your information, I got the documents and sent it in and I emailed them like two or three times now asking where we were with it and have not received a response. But until that process is completed, the bylaw technically is not legitimate. It doesn't have a teeth, it's not legitimate, the bylaw, because it, the pond belongs to the state.
Yeah, it's a, it has no effect until it finishes the approval process and when the chief of the state environmental police approves it, then it's done, right?
Correct.
And does that have to be done? Is our bylaw contingent on the other towns completing that process also?
They haven't answered me, so I reached out to Sturbridge, Danny's Brookfield. You have parallel bylaws. I was able to get a copy of the certified vote and Attorney General's letter approving it from East Brookfield. I have not been able to get that from Sturbridge, however. And I sent East Brookfield's in, but again, we haven't heard anything back.
And so Sturbridge is...
I don't know if they're waiting because they want all three towns to use all of the same lake. I haven't heard back, I don't know.
I guess, okay. I was trying to ask a slightly different question and that is, if the, if the state approves ours, then are we, it's like, are we able to enforce it even though the other towns don't have theirs approved yet?
So because it's a great pond, I do not know who has enforcement authority. You may have a bylaw, but maybe the environmental police will enforce it.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
All right. So we'll, so there's enforcement. And then separate from that is the signage, the request for signage at the ramps. And that, and I would say that we can talk about what we want to do, but we're not going to be, I don't think we're going to be able to do anything unless there is a, an approved bylaw that is relevant to the signage. And that, until, until they approve the bylaw and there's a bylaw saying no wake at when the water level gets 601, there's, the state's going to say you can't put a sign up because there's no rule against it, is my expectation. So it seems, it seems to me that we can, we can discuss what we want to do and we can look into making arrangements to what we, how we want to do it. But until there's a bylaw that we can say, "We need a sign" because there, it's like, until there is an effective bylaw, we're stuck at the, "We want a sign." Why? You don't have a bylaw. And that's what we're going to get back from the state. Right. And so, but I think that, speaking for myself, I think that, yeah, having something like a surveyed marking to assist us in making determination that the water is high enough that the bylaw is triggered and then having signage at the boat ramps to assist people in helping them understand that there is a bylaw and that it is in effect is going to be, is a good thing. It's not going to be a lot of money and it's going to be helpful to the property of the residents of all the towns around the ponds.
Yep.
So I think we're waiting. I would encourage you to, to think through how, it's like identify surveyors and how you're going to get that marked so that we can have a clear indication of when the...
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, I, I could have it surveyed. But since it's a town bylaw, I think the town should do the survey. But if you want, if you want it surveyed, I can get it surveyed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We can, we can, we can talk about that and then, and then getting the signage in.
Okay.
Well, actually getting an agreement from the DEP to not take our signage down if we get the signage in.
Well, and that's why I'm saying it's like, we can talk about what we want to do, but we're not doing anything until there's a real bylaw that the signs can reference. At which point then we talk to the state about, yeah, we want, we have a bylaw, we want to put these signs in. Are you, let's, let's get you to the point where you're not going to write them down before we put them in. So I think, I think we can, we can plan, but until the state DEP approves the bylaw, it's, I don't think there's much we can do at this point from a, from a...
I will, I will write up some suggested procedures that I, and submit them to Kelly so that we have some draft... that we have some draft at least in place, so that we can talk about that once the bylaw is officiated by the state.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay? Great.
All right.
So, so the second topic is the skating rink on Pine Lane, the roller skating rink, which is town property. It is the only remaining building on, as part of the campground.
Can we hit pause on that for just a second?
I'm sorry?
I just want to hit pause on that for just a second.
Yep.
Did we actually get that through the land court? Because I thought that that one was still hung up in land court somehow, or is it actually a property?
I thought we were still in progress on that one also, so, that was my...
So...
I'll have to double check.
And the only reason why I'm saying pause is because I'm not 100% certain. I could have sworn that that was the one, like, defective property with regards to the documentation when all of that stuff went through land court.
Okay.
My understanding is that there is property there that the town has not completed its taking of, because I remember when we had that discussion about vehicles being stored on that land, that it was on the land that the town didn't own, and therefore it limited our ability to take action.
But the building might actually be on property that we own, but the space they were parking might not, so we probably need to get that clarified.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that area, so I don't know. So, we can, so, we can, so, we can go ahead with the, on the presumption that we own it, but with the understanding that if the town is not, doesn't own that property, there's not much we can do at this point.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Whoever owns it, there's a liability there. I took some pictures today. There's several, a couple from the outside, and some from the inside. All of the windows are broken, the roof is leaking, the floor has collapsed, it's all overgrown. It's a liability, and if we have suggested that some of our residents who had decaying property put fences around it, then I think if this is town property, we ought to do the same, both for the protection of the town, and for the safety of the kids that are getting in there. You can see that they're in there, and there's graffiti in the building. I mean, obviously, they're in and out of there all the time, or frequently.
They're kids.
So, yeah, I know.
They shouldn't be, but they are, just like...
Yeah, but it is very dangerous. I mean, the floor is rotted, there's a balcony that's out over the water, if a kid falls off, there's a concrete head wall right there, you know. And I'm just suggesting that, I thought the town owned it, if the town does in fact own it, I think we have, the town has a responsibility to secure, or something to take care of the liability.
And is to address the safety issues there.
Yes.
Whether it's by putting a fence up, or by knocking it down, or something else.
Right.
But, safety is the concern.
Yep.
Do they still have a tear-down program from the state? Because we took advantage of that a couple, three times. That's what I was Googling, in case anyone is wondering what I was doing on my phone. That might help us get some funding to just tear it down, but in the interim, I think we need to identify, are we actually the owners? And if we are the owners, we need to look at getting somebody in to do the fencing. I'm not quite sure what budget that would come out of, though.
Can we keep these?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll put these into the meeting record.
Kelly, do you have any recommendations of what we could legally use in terms of if we were going to try to secure that property?
If we don't, or if we do?
No, if we do own it.
Well, I would suggest we start by putting up a fence, because the tear-down will go down to about $300, and...
Right, no, I understand that. Yeah, but I'm thinking about the funding even for the fence.
I am thinking about funding. I would have to look at the different budgets and see where they've fallen, because if we own it, my fault, the building needs.
Good.
We have, I know that there is a line item in the budget for taking down boats, I think it's $2,900 or something like that.
Leaped over from, I think it was from, do you get his award article? A couple years back.
I don't know if we rolled it into the recent, it's been sitting for so long, I don't know if we rolled it, or if the accountant rolled it into free cash, or it's still sitting.
I don't know if it was an operational budget, or if it was a...
I don't think, it would have been a warrant article, it's not on the off budget.
So, more articles that sit for multiple years, the account can...
Oh, can.
...go all the way. So, I don't think that was warranted, but I have to check.
Okay. So, I think at this point, the action plan is to determine the, to confirm the ownership of the building, whether it's the town's or not, and so, I think we should put this on the agenda for our next meeting, where we can either confirm that the town doesn't own it, and therefore our options are limited, we can pursue the actual building owner, which I don't think is going to get very far, since I, or if it's the town's, we can then discuss what steps we want to take in order to secure the site.
Great.
And protect people.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Does that make sense? And I don't think we need a vote for that.
Okay.
Since we're just planning to talk again later.
Okay. So, the last item was a kind of an unofficial update in reference to the alum treatment, which was done in June. Most of you know, I think you probably do, that the town contributed to the funds to having that 319 grant put in place. So what it was, what the alum treatment was, was to sequester the phosphorus in the water. And one of the ways you determine how effective that treatment was, is by checking the clarity or the turbidity of the water. Just prior to the treatment, the Lake Association did a series of secadisc readings, which is a disc that you use to determine clarity. And the reading that we got, the best reading we got was 2.1 meters, which is just over six feet. About a month ago, we did another secadisc, a follow-up secadisc, and it's 5.2 meters. So, it has been a very significant improvement in water clarity. And I talked with Becky at the conservation in Sturbridge today, to see if they had an idea of when they would be getting the final report from either ESS, who was the engineer that orchestrated, or from Mass DEP with the 319 grant. And she said, she was hoping, they were hoping to get it within a couple of weeks. So with that report, you should get a, all of the technical data and the chemistry of, in the final report. But I just wanted to touch base, I sent you a quick little note, just to let you know what the effect was, and that there should be a report coming through.
All right, well, I'm speaking for myself, I'm glad to hear that it has had a beneficial effect, and it sounds like that's good for the health of the pond.
It's good for the health of the pond, it's good for the town, you know, it keeps your property tax up, and, but thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Don. All right. James, you have a, you have a bylaw recommendation?
Or proposal, yes. And hopefully it's in your packet, otherwise I have a couple copies.
I do have a copy, there you go.
If not, I have a couple spares. Okay. So a little bit of background, you already have a bylaw on the books, which basically states that if you want to have a parade in town, you need the written permission of the selectmen, which I'm sure you gave the other day when we had a parade. What I'm suggesting is that we expand that, upgrade it, so any event, you know, bike athon, marathon, bike race, would now require the approval from the board of selectmen to hold it. And there are also some teeth in law, for example, there's no penalty right now on the bylaw. So if I were to hold a parade, so what?
Okay.
Okay? So basically, this is what I propose, I would ask that you would consider putting this on the next town meeting, otherwise I can raise signatures for the spring, but I, given how hectic the spring meeting is, I think it's best to discuss stuff like this at the fall meeting. Okay? Now, there's a reason why I came up with this, and I don't know if any of you were aware, back in August, there was a bike race on Rice Corner Road. Are you aware of that?
On what date?
I don't know the exact, it was the middle of August.
Okay, was it, was it the, was it the charity ride out of Oakville on the 20th, 20th, I believe?
I believe it was organized out of Sturbridge, they were going to Highland.
Oh, Highland, okay, I know there's something out of Oakville in August, I was away that date, but I don't know anything out of Highland, but, okay.
Okay, so any of the case, if you know Rice Corner Road, it's a narrow road, it goes up and down, it's, you know, a lot of blind spots. So I'm going down this, and there's bicyclists in the middle of the road. I had to go around them, another car was coming on, I could have been hit in a head-on collision. So it's tough enough on Rice Corner Road when there's one or two bicyclists going down the road, get around them. So there's a public safety issue, and certainly if someone's going to run a bike race, they should get permission from the board of selectmen, I would think. Anyway, that's what caused me to think about it. If you're going to do it for something like that, in looking over the current bylaw, I thought it just needs to be upgraded, for any use of the public roadway, for any event, any kind. Should come before the board and get their permission, and this also provides that, you know, if you want to impose some, like, requirements, like you pay for a police detail, that should be part of it too.
I think the only...
So any questions as to why?
So I think the only, I have a couple, I don't know if it's questions or comments. I know the prior years for that same race, they did come with the board of selectmen, did we not get a request?
I, no, but I do, I do remember in the past, I believe we didn't, it went to the police chief, too.
Right. So, so, there's aspects of this that, do you want me to make a motion so we can, for discussion, regarding whether to place this or not?
Um...
Or do you want to just discuss first?
Yeah, we can discuss first, I don't think we need a motion.
So, I mean, from a standpoint of, if the primary concern is the controls and the teeth, right, I'm somewhat of the opinion that, you know, the first line is our, is essentially what we already have on the books. The last line is providing teeth, though anything that's in the bylaw, obviously, I think it's, what is the maximum fine, is like $200, which we need to upgrade our bylaw in general, to potentially allow for more teeth.
I think you have a...
I think there's a blanket statement in our bylaw that any violation is, can be a fine of up to $200. This would exceed that, so if we were going to go that direction, we'd need to upgrade that to whatever threshold would be appropriate. I think the only piece of this that I find a little, I think, overzealous in our regulation is the public hearing for each and every parade or event that we're going to hold in town. I think that that's maybe not appropriate.
What if it's just passing through town, it's not even happening?
Yeah.
I mean, this was just passing through, or was it?
If it was...
Initiate here, an event here? Obviously, it is a safety issue, it is a safety factor, but do you, how do you notice the surrounding towns, that an event is happening there, how many permission to go through our town? Can you limit road use that way? That's something to look at.
Yeah.
We may absolutely be able to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I would, I would say that we're not able to control someone running an event in another town, but we're able to, we have the right to regulate the use of the roadways in our town.
Yeah.
And I would say that it would be, it's not so much the nature of the event, it's that the event, that the event occurs in such a way to create a safety hazard.
Right.
So, so to me, a charity ride where everyone's kind of tooting along, it's, in this, it's not a race context here, but everyone's out doing it, they paid $100 to do a ride, and then they get two beers at the end, and there's a whole bunch of kumbaya camaraderie. It's like, I've done those before, they're a lot of fun. And then when people do that, there's no race, and so everyone's like, sometimes they ride side by side, and when a car comes, everyone tries to slide in, single file, lift a car by. To my mind, a race is something, someone doesn't want to lose, and in a race, they're much more likely to be aggressive in their use of the road in order to maintain position. So to me, my thought is that the focus here should be on unsafe usage of roads, or usage of roads that creates unsafe conditions. I'm also a little bit concerned of including but not limited to, it's like, that's...
This is very, very broad.
Yeah, and the broadness concerns me, and so...
Any use for any event.
Again, in looking, thinking about this, I mean, we can't look, 50 years from now, they may have a Google car race, okay? That's the use of a public roadway. I think you've got to look ahead, if you pass a bylaw. I mean, there are certain things that are in development, for example, self-driving cars.
But if the event doesn't cause a safety hazard, what is the problem? Why is it...
Well, it's also an inconvenience to the residents, and you should probably solicit their input. I mean, you're, there are two issues. Rice Corner Road is, to me, is not a place, if you want to have a road race, go down...
If, if, when, we get motorcycle rides through here all the time, and there's a big flight of motorcycles can come through here, and, yeah, it's inconvenient if you want to turn out through them, or it's inconvenient if you get stuck behind them, but it's a public road. We can't limit them because we don't like that they're riding together.
So, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Let's take this under advisement, let's do a little bit of research, let's figure out kind of what, do a little bit of calibration, you know, well, do a couple of things, right? Figure out what's already on the books for the state, what's already on the books for us, what's on the books in some of the neighboring communities, and come back in like a month, and talk about the, what we think would be an appropriate adjustment to our existing bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I think we do have some teeth, I reached out to Chief Blanchard when Mr. Cook's request first came to us, just to understand what our current situation was, and I have to, I don't have time to, I don't want to look it up right now, but my recollection is that it was, he said we did have the ability to find someone who was having an unauthorized parade.
Right.
And to my mind, that's great, it's a hazard.
But that's not, well, he's not talking about parades, you already have...
Yeah, you already have that, in your bylaw, there's no...
So, yeah, you didn't find...
But I thought he said we didn't have, I thought Mr. Cook said we didn't have a bylaw...
We have a bylaw, but it only covers parades.
Oh, okay.
That's why mine is, limited, Maryland parade.
I miss her, too.
Okay, I should have brought the old bylaw in.
So I think that's, I think that's what we do, is I think we take this, we do a little side-by-side compare, we take it under advisement, we may come up with some modified text, and we can put it back on an agenda, and then have the discussion about what we're willing to support putting on the warrant, if anything.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's reasonable, I don't think, especially with it coming into winter, I don't think there's going to be, it's like...
Or I'll risk having an event in the next, like, four weeks is relatively...
Dog sled race.
Dingo. You know, if they need, if they're having dog sled races on the road, then we're going to have to talk to the highway department.
Okay. I want to bring up one other item while I have your ear.
It has to be on the agenda. Open meeting law, we can't violate open meetings.
Well, wait a minute, I could suggest it, and you can table, I know for the openly, if I raise something, you can table it, you can't discuss it.
You can suggest something for another meeting.
Okay, let me suggest something for another meeting.
Okay.
Okay. FYI, in case you didn't see it, the state has awarded $100 million to create a passenger rail track from Springfield to Worcester. I would suggest the town raises hand about putting a passenger station in. And if you want to discuss it, I'd be glad to come back, put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
I know, did you see that? Are you aware of this? $110 million, that federal infrastructure bill.
Okay. Karen, can we put a placeholder for this on the November 2nd, or the first meeting Thank you. All right, that brings us on to our next one, resignation of the highway superintendent. So, Ryan has submitted his notice, we have the, and so now we have a highway, we are about to be at a highway department of one.
So in light of what's occurred, is it all right if I recuse myself from this?
Yes.
Yes, you can recuse yourself from anything you can do.
Yes. All right. Does, now, just a question, is it necessary for Brad to recuse himself for us to plan for the next highway superintendent, or is that...
Please refuse your question.
Does Brad, is it necessary or appropriate for Brad, or is it necessary or reasonable for Brad to recuse himself when we are talking about replacing Ryan? Or does he only, is he only, does he only recuse himself when we talk about how we're handling Ryan's transition out?
I'm not sure I recuse myself on this election process.
Does he have to?
Okay, no, no, it's, I'm, I'm more asking, is it, would it be reasonable? I'm trying to understand, it's like, I understand, I understand perfectly why Brad would want to, and why it makes sense for him to recuse himself from discussing the, Ryan's transition out of the town. But once, when we talk about finding a new highway superintendent, it's like, does Brad need to be, recuse himself from that part of the conversation?
It's entirely Brad's choice.
I, all right, that's fine. And if you ask...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Mr.?
What is the purpose of Brad stepping down? Can you make that very clear?
Um, you mean, why Brad's recusing himself from the discussion?
Stepping down, yeah, same thing.
Uh, let's see, I believe he feels that, I, at the risk of speaking for Ms. Kudelski, because he has a complaint against Ryan, he feels that it's best that he not be involved in discussion involving the highway superintendent position.
That isn't why he stepped down. I got nothing to do with it.
No, 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 no. Brad has recused himself. Are you asking why, why Ryan resigned?
No, I'm asking why he's excusing himself from the, from this policy of what you're gonna discuss.
I...
He can recuse himself for any reason that he chooses.
Yep.
No, I'm just wondering what the reason was, that's all.
Okay, so...
You, I, I've told you what I, I told you what I think his reason is. He can speak for himself if he wants to, but not right now. At least, let's, let's, let's focus on the board business here.
So, so I, I do wanna talk about something in the context of like, thinking strategically, and some of the other challenges that have been before us, is that, I do have a question as to whether we should be talking about just replacing the highway superintendent. Or, given the issues that we have potentially with staffing around the water department, is, is this potentially an opportunity to move to, and it would be more expensive? So it's, it needs to be a consideration, and, and because we're at a point where right now, we don't have a town meeting to do this restructure, it may be even hairier, okay? Let me just put all of that out there. But at one point, possibly four or five years ago, we talked about moving to a construct where we had a director of public works who held a water license, as well as a water superintendent, so that that would get us to the two full-time people that had that capability. Or make it a requirement, when we do the highway superintendent job, that they be willing to pursue certification relative to the water department as a sec, additional duty as the highway superintendent. So I know that may not necessarily be typical, but is, is that something that we could at least explore in the context structurally of what we're doing here?
I, I definitely think it bears exploration. My, my gut reaction is that, is that, is, I'm concerned about the cost of having two licensed water operators on the books. But my thought is, let's, but that, I don't think, so that's concern, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't examine it. I mean, we do, I mean, we, we do have the water department coming back in two weeks with some of their ideas for a secondary operator. And it does make sense, if there is a, if there is some transition here, it does make sense to say, okay, since things are in flux, do we want to settle them back down the way they were? Or do we take advantage of the flux, or do we say, there is some flux, and do we want to settle things down in a different configuration?
Yeah, but the challenge is, is that if we're changing the configuration, even as I opened my mouth, I knew I was gonna trip over it. It's the fact that if it's, if it's not in our personnel bylaw as a position, we can't do it.
You have a highway superintendent who reports directly to the Board of Selectmen. You have a water superintendent who directly reports to a different elected board. This is a massive restructure. If it's something you wanna do, it needs to be explored thoroughly and get the support of just not only the departments, but the residents. And it needs to be done through a town meeting and election process.
Yep.
So it's structured properly. So if you do this, this is down the road.
Yeah, okay.
You can start...
That's fine, but we can start thinking about it.
So that, but it is not, it's not the immediate solution.
Okay, that's legit. And, and even as I opened my mouth to say it, I realized that it's not something we could do in essence in this, in this process, but it's something that I think in the context of this process, we need to talk about.
I mean, I, I think that we are going to, I mean, we're going into plowing season, we're going to need a superintendent in there sooner, or someone in position to, to supervise those things.
Yep.
The, the operation of that department. I mean, some of the outside active, I believe some of the outside, their outside active work goes down, and a lot of their work in the winter is more maintenance-oriented. So, but fundamentally, it's a...
Okay, so anyway. So after we digressed, my apologies.
Hmm.
So what are we looking at? So...
So, so I'm, I'm looking at a...
You, you asked to have the job description?
Yes.
And the advertisement included?
Mm-hmm.
And you want?
Thank you. And so, I think at this point, I think the intention is, now, right now, we have, of the, of the four highways department employees we started the year with, one is retired, one is on medical leave.
No.
No.
No? Okay, I'm sorry, he's, he, I'm, uh, thank you for the correction. We have one who is, um...
Showing up for work every single day.
He is?
Correct.
I, okay, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I was not, I was, I was under a different impression. Good. And so we have, so we have one who's retired, one who's resigned, and we have two employees coming in every day. Is that correct?
That is.
Excellent. Well, that's good, because I was worried we only had one showing up every day. All right.
So at least somebody can wave the trucks away when they're filling potholes.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And I believe the, and I believe one of them is the, one of them is a new hire, and the other one has significant experience.
He's a new hire from another town. He had, he had experience from another town. He'd come to us.
Okay, he's, he's, okay. Shows how much I know.
I reviewed the superintendent job description.
Mm-hmm.
And it has a couple of inconsistencies.
And they might wanna address those.
In chapter one, or paragraph one, the third line down, it says he's a non-administrative order. And then it proceeds to list multiple administrative functions. So that made him to come up. The essential functions include tree maintenance. So that's something that you wanna leave there. Since specific licenses are required to care for trees at this point in time, I don't know what they were when this was written.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would say...
I would put a phrase at the bottom that they made from time to time, provide supporting activities to the tree warden.
That's where I was thinking to go. Just beat me to it.
I, I think it, I think it should be in there, but not necessarily as one of their primary duties, but they do play a supporting role.
Yes, absolutely.
In tree maintenance, so... Trying to look at some of the other things.
I just write down what you said.
Kind of like an other duties as assigned, but calling it out specifically.
Yeah.
Yes. One thing I'm thinking of is that when we, when we post this, we're probably gonna have to have a salary range. Kelly, can you look into what the going rate for highway superintendent is for comparable towns?
I can do that.
As I know, from our experience with the treasurer, if we don't post a rate, if we post too low a rate, we're not gonna get anyone's attention.
And didn't the state just pass a law about requiring like wages to be in job postings?
Oh, that there be a, a wage range be posted?
Salary transparency, or was that down?
That, I, I don't, I understand what you're saying. I don't know if Massachusetts passed that law or not. It wouldn't surprise me.
I listen to the radio in both states, so sometimes I get confused.
So if you continue down the page to the bottom line, it says responsible for maintenance of all department equipment, vehicle machinery, performance, maintenance. Is this personally? Does he have to be organic? Or does he oversee, and if they have the skill, do the work?
Yeah, I would think you might wanna add it.
I would say it ensures the performance of, and then that can be either in-house or, or vendor, right? So instead of performs, if you use ensure the performance of, that would...
I didn't know the whole different admin things, but you take that first thing out, then that's a non-issue.
Mm-hmm.
There's a, a feature here where it identifies available grants, prepares and submits grants, applications, administers grants, funds received, and ensures compliance with grant requirements. You have a full-time, well, you have a grant writer that does all of this already. Do you wanna bifurcate that position? Is this, this is not, since I've been here, been, been actually something that was followed. A grant writer does handle grants, or the engineer for the project has overseen some portions of it.
About coordinates with appropriate entities to take advantage of grants, and supports the submittal of grant applications. With appropriate documentation and, you know, estimates or something along those lines.
Do you want your highway superintendent doing grant searches and spending time on grant websites? That's what this is saying?
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying in place of that, say, you know, coordinates with grant authorities regarding available grants, so the, the grant, like, or with, or just specifically saving...
Yeah, every, and then, you know, we got an email through a lister for a specific department that says, these grants are available.
Yeah.
Shoot that up to the grant writer and say, hey, these would fit our department really well.
Yeah, yeah, so coordinates with grant writers, supports the grant rating process. Because what I don't want is somebody say, you know, the grant writer says, hey, here's a, here's a thing we can apply for, for a million dollars. I don't have time for that, right? It needs to be in the job description to support the process, even if they're not responsible for the process.
Mm-hmm, okay. The next under minimum competencies. You have, the third bullet is basically they need a, certain, be a certified procurement officer.
Say that, which ones is, which bullet?
The third bullet, under minimum competencies.
The thorough knowledge of laws, rules, and regulations.
Yes, related to road projects. And this is, that's fine, right up to that point. Including design selection, contract bidding, awards, and project management. Now, understanding that is, is super, but expecting them to have a procurement certificate might be a reach, because this is what you need to have as procurement certificate. And by the way, Lindsay just became a certified procurement officer. Yeah, 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 love that.
So do we just wanna change that to familiar, add in a...
I'm just pointing it out. You can leave it in, you can change it. I'm just pointing it out to you that, that it is a, is a high...
It's a high bar.
It's a high bar for such a small town, a small sound.
So, so can, can we, can we split it out to minimum competencies and then like, um...
Nice to have.
Additional credential, you know, additional recommended credentials or something along those lines.
Sure, because if this is a minimum competency?
Yeah, I, I think, I think...
It's a requirement.
Right, I, I understand that, right? So, because I think it probably needs to be split out, what's required, and then what would, what's a, like, preferential type.
I didn't see anything else in the, in that, on that page that would be an issue as far as the requirements. And then you have your education and experience requirements. If you go down to possession of a loud hoister and hoisting engineer's license with a minimum of A, one C, one B, two B, and a four A. Four A has been discontinued by the state. Now, in order to have any full qualification, you have to all prove them. Which that was a blanket one that covered all of the other. So the class four license, which is what, this cover, covers drill rigs, pipeline side booms, concrete pumps, catch bases cleaners, side hangers, and specialty side boom mowers. So this prior four A would be all of these fours now, but I do want to specify that.
Just so that person knows.
Certainly. That's off the DOR website. So you see, I wanted you to see what these letters represented, which is why I printed it.
But I don't think we have a drill rig, a pipeline side boom, a concrete pump. We do have a catch basin cleaner, we do have specialty side boom mowers.
So it's, it's just something to bring up to be in the, in the description.
So you're saying that basically the four A used to be every, all the other fours?
Correct.
Okay.
And now they've broken it out.
Now they, they don't have a catch-all. You gotta get each one individually.
Right.
Okay.
And you have to get continuing education on each one now individually. Before you could get continuing education on your four A, that may have covered one, may have covered the other the next year and so on, but no. So it's a...
And I think one of the things to do is also is that someone may not have all of the hoisting licenses, and I think it just would be willing, it should be phrased as, or be willing to acquire within some period of time.
Okay, in the ad, in the ad, or in the job description?
Um, probably both. They need to have a valid hoisting.
Do you just, in the, I mean, how detailed is the ad going to be? The ad could be saying that they're hoisting...
It's not the ad. The ad links to the job description. It's in the actual job requirement.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't think we have to get into it much in the ad. The, the job, they'll look at the job requirement and say, how do I line up? And we make sure that the necessary detail's there, that this is what we expect them to have if, and we're willing to work with them if they're, if they have some.
That's true, yeah, we can, it's always up to us of whether to, to waive it, yeah. Okay. Were there any other things that you saw that would be potential?
The work schedule is seven AM to three PM. It doesn't say how many days, how many hours. You know it's over for, because of overtime, for certain seasons and, and certain situations, right? So, so if there's torrential downmoors and things are flooded, somebody's coming in and helping load the roads and so on. So that might need to be tightened up a little bit.
So maybe put work schedule, like put core hours of seven to three on weekdays, but...
So this is Monday through Friday?
Right, but currently they were on a four-day schedule.
I don't want to ship back to the, go to five eights instead of four tens?
In, in here, I think we could just say that, indicate that winter is seven to three, five days a week, and summer is six to four, whatever their specific hours are, four days a week. When they change, we don't put in the job description. That's more detail that I think is needed.
I'm just pointing out that it doesn't say how many hours a week. It is just, this will be seven a week, it doesn't say. It's just, just an inconsistency.
Okay, then we, we could say it's like, work is four days a week. We should definitely mention forty hours a week.
I, I think the work schedule is, is generally forty hours a week, some, some overtime required, you know, depending on, you know, depending on events and conditions, right?
I mean, yeah, anyone applying to this job knows that flood, that catch basin flood.
She don't know that.
Do you want the job to be hourly or salary? It does not say that either. So that's something I think about.
That's a, that's an important discussion, actually.
It is a very important discussion, but that is, that is just something I noticed when we reviewed the job.
Historically speaking, it's been, uh, correct.
Yes. Yes, it, it, I would, I would, I would think it would be hard... Yes, it, I would, I would think it would be hard for us to find somebody who would be willing to do it salary for the salary, if you look at the total wage-
Right.
For the year, including that all the time because of storms-
Right.
And weather, and it's, and rightfully so, so you need to just-
Right.
Yeah.
So, you have your education. We receive a email from the town clerk, asking the board to consider putting together a hiring committee. You have the option of discussing an interim, to give the time to get a hiring committee and a correct fit for the town, for more. So, those are just certain options here.
I mean, I think the more immediate concern is an interim superintendent, but we do want to make sure we get moving on hiring someone on a permanent basis.
What are our options for an interim?
Could you give me more of a question than that? Because it's very open-ended.
Oh, that was intentionally open-ended.
Not intentionally, yeah.
You can't blame me for trying.
It was a good shot. It's my first word, you know.
So, yeah. It's interesting, because we're in a particularly interesting bind, because I think historically, and the last time we were without a superintendent, we had some folks step out and provided the individual who was acting as senior with a nominal stipend for covering as interim superintendent. Do, does either of our employees really have the experience to even consider that?
That is not something that I could comment on, because I don't know what their experience is. I, I know that I've heard very good things about Mike having a lot of technical knowledge, and, and having stepped up and assisted when Ryan has been out, and when he has been on vacation, or-
Has for-
Because one of the reasons wasn't available, and Mike was the one who came and said, "All right, this equipment needs to be done," and so on. So, definitely an option, for you to consider.
Is that something that you'd want to talk to him about?
To Ryan?
No, not to Ryan.
Okay, I-
Ryan doesn't get it, Ryan doesn't get a conversation in this one, necessarily. I mean, you could talk to Ryan about it, but-
Okay. It's, I, I think it bears investigation that we should ask, or we should, we should consider.
It's something to think about. The technical aspects of doing the work do not equate to the focus of administrative-
No, absolutely.
-involved that the highway superintendent has. I know that the current administrative assistant has done a phenomenal job of learning the workings, and maybe somebody you want to consider to take on, on a temporary basis, filling the administrative, the work, tracking-
And that's how we did it, that's how we did it last time, actually, was we had, we had Donald stand up as basically being like a foreman prior to having the foreman role, and we had Cindy Thompson basically do all the administrative stuff associated with keeping the highway-
The difference here is that here's a new amount of-
But that's the challenge, is even both of them, yeah.
So, it could be, it could work, I don't know, it's your call.
I don't know if it's gonna work.
Well, it's not the only option. We could reach out to the VA and see if there are any civil engineers who want a part-time gig, and might want to be an interim. It's a shot in the dark, but civil engineers will have no ropes, so-
Oh, you're talking-
Got a retired vet, or vet who's off duty, or a reserve-
Person.
Person who's looking for a part-time, or, you know, an interim-
Interim gig.
Transition.
Something to transition them. It's, it's a shot, I'm grasping it, I, people throw ideas at me, and I'm giving you the ones that think are viable.
You also might be able to reach out to Skillbridge, actually. Skillbridge is the folks that, and this is like the really good gig, and I don't know if they'll, I don't know if they'll do it for municipalities, but they'll actually pay the service members' wages for their last, like, three to six months prior to their retirement, in like the equivalent of an internship job, to get them, and, and they prefer that you have a position that could be filled by that person in the future. So, it's almost like getting an opportunity to test drive somebody as an interim, and then if they met all qualifications and turned out to be a good fit, then you could then hire them at the end of their, like, government-funded period of you. It's called Skillbridge. It's, and they have people that are like, you know, I don't know if folks are available fast enough, I don't know what the lead time is, I think usually it's like one to three months, so it might not be quick enough for us, but that might be an option. We could post both for an interim and for, you know, I, I think what we'd want to do is get this up sooner rather than later, but also have it posted both as an interim and as a permanent.
Another option is to hire a company that would do all of this.
Right, to contract up.
To contract it up, that it would be, it would be an outside company that would look at everything from a third-party mutual perspective.
You mean like a recruiting company to find somebody?
Yes.
Okay.
There are recruiting companies out there that work specifically with municipalities' supervisory positions.
Right.
So, that's another option that you could use. And they would then get their resumes and screen them, and do their background checks, and do all of the, if it gets to that point-
I would actually-
They'd present to the board a group, or a number of applicants that suit.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, I would prefer that to a hiring committee, because they, those hiring committees get so political, and so, and a lot of times are not necessarily focused on the, what's the good of the town, it's the, you know, what's my agenda? Even when people are, are doing it with good intentions, there always seems to be that skewing that goes on. But it does cost money.
Yeah, about, about how much would that cost?
I have absolutely no idea.
Well, then, let's investigate.
Typically, typically, it's seventeen percent of whatever the hiring salary is gonna be of the person that they're hiring. Typically, at least, at least if it not, I don't know for the municipal, one special, specializing in municipalities, I can tell you that's usually the head undergoing rate for corporate stuff.
Seventeen percent, or so, okay.
Yeah, somewhere in that, somewhere in that.
But to a certain extent, if that, if that, if that reduces our transition time and allows us to avoid problems that would happen if it took us longer to fill the position, it might, it could be money well spent, or it could be money poorly spent, I don't know, it's, it's hard to prove something didn't happen.
So, and honestly, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they're even interested in it, but I could reach out to Orion that does like senior NCO and junior military officer-type placements and see if they won't-
Well, the reason I'm thinking military-
But they won't have the meaningful experience.
So, the reason I'm thinking military is because this is basically a very technical road construction oriented position, and we may be able to find an interim who has excellent technical skills and experience-
Right.
-to, to fill the spot, and to find a person that would want to take the job.
Yeah. You don't still have any phone friends with the National Guards? You don't have any phone friends still with the National Guards, do you? I know you've been out a long time.
I do. Unfortunately, I don't live locally.
Yeah, that's a problem, is there's not a lot in this area.
I mean, it almost seems like we need a little bit of an above, all of the above approach, like, I mean, Ryan, Ryan's resignation is effective the end of next week.
Yeah.
So, we need, it's like, so, we need to think of what are we going to do?
And you got that list you asked for immediately, I want to point that out.
Yes, you turned that around very quickly.
Yes, I did.
And so, my thought is that, it's like, so, we want to make sure that we have a plan in place for then, it's like for October 16th, or technically, five, five PM, October 12th.
So-
When he's, when he's done, because that weekend, we're gonna need, we're gonna need something in place on the 12th, when he's done, or whenever he's done.
You're not gonna have something in place in five days?
No, but my thought is, but, but my point is, if we, if we, like, if, if we, in that time, we can start looking into a, just saying, it's like, as a temporary stopgap measure, we could appoint, it's like, we can investigate appointing someone to be a technical lead-on call, and seeing if Lindsay can take on more of the administrative task while we find something else.
Consider all the things that I told you, though, unless you, unless it's your intention to pick one of the options.
No, 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 my intention is that, like, we, we do that until, say, four weeks down the line, when we can bring in a, an interim, or if it's six weeks. But the thought is that, I, I, my concern is that if we say, "Okay, we're going to look for an interim," and let's say it takes six weeks, there's a period of time before the interim comes in, how's it gonna work? And so, we need to, we need to look at the whole calendar and say-
It's an offensive, won't we pick for interim?
Or at, maybe interim-
Or the process, you pick for the interim.
What's that?
This is not a permanent hire, it's, it's an interim.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
Yeah.
Would you guys consider offering, asking Ryan if he stays longer, so we can find a replacement, and even offering him a bonus for doing that? Give us more time to find a replacement?
I didn't consider that, because I'm, the impression I get is that, and I could be wrong, is that Ryan has found an opportunity, considers better, and, and therefore, I don't think he's going to be available to stay on. And so, and so, and so that's why I didn't think of it, Chris. So, I mean, my, my thinking is that, I think it makes sense to, I, I like, I like the idea of looking for an interim supervisor.
So, let's, let's start with the, let's go from the most tactical to the most-
To the longest term.
Okay. So, which of us needs to go down to the highway, go over the laundry list with Ryan, sit down and talk to the three remaining employees down there, and figure out if we don't have somebody in place as a formal interim, what happens on, let's call it October 15th? Do you want to do that, or should I do that?
I'll do that.
Okay, all right. So, you have the sit down with the remaining employees-
Yep.
Sit down with the laundry list, understand what, and frankly, what, you know, and while, and despite my somewhat flip comment about it, you know, if Ryan wants to be involved in that process, fine, so we can give you the additional details associated with that list, right? And you come up with the, what the two to four weeks after he leaves look like, because there's a lot of stuff on that list that said it had to be done in the next four to eight weeks, right? So, I think, I think while we have him in the seat, you know, before the actual transition occurs, at a very minimum, we need that four to eight weeks planned, assuming we can't find somebody to be an interim, okay? And depending on the scope of your findings there, do we know what type of companies would offer the type of interim service that one of those companies would provide, potentially to cover that work?
Yeah, so we'd have to reach out to, you say Skillbridge, and what was the other one that you said?
Orion and Orion. Yeah. Orion haunts me all the time, because they placed me a couple of times, so.
Well, then you've got a relationship-
I have a relationship- I will do the, I will do the outreach to Orion, in fact, if you want, I can, I can also probably reach out to Skillbridge.
That would be, that would be huge, that would be huge, because the more we split this load up, the more likely it will come together in a, in a shorter period of time.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, we have, it's like, I know Ryan probably signs time cards, but then we have to figure out who's going to sign time cards after Ryan leaves.
Yeah, well, I mean, Lindsay, I, I mean, those things are typically, like, those things are the ones that would, and, and you do need to sit down and like, call all that stuff out, but like, Lindsay would typically do that.
I think Lindsay actually has permission to sign for invoices.
Yeah.
And then she's, because when Ryan is out, well, definitely not.
Okay, yeah, and that's, just making sure that gets handled.
Make sure everybody gets paid.
As I was gonna say, yeah, people need, people need to get paid, they get very cranky when that happens, when that doesn't happen.
Now, is, is Donald formally retired now?
The eleventh he left.
The eleventh he left. I knew it was like-
Of the last.
What's that? Yeah, okay. So, that's a question, and that might be one of the first people I would go to as like an interim, even though it would be more like a foreman rather than superintendent, is that they can work even after he retires, they can, do they have to, do they have a waiting period?
They have a waiting period, they have a gap before they can start to-
What's the gap?
I don't know what the gap is, but I know that there is a gap.
Yeah.
I think, I want to see if thirty days, but it may be longer.
It might be ninety or six months even.
Thirty sounds a little short, but-
Well, you never know.
Yeah, I know, it, it could be thirty, I'm not saying it's not, it just strikes me-
Can we check into that, and just like, how long the wait is, because I don't know that he'd want the headaches long-term, but he might, he might be open to a little extra money as an interim?
No, it's not gonna happen.
What's that?
It won't happen. Not with Donald.
If he says no, he says no.
It's worth asking him. At least, at least let him know, fuck him. So.
And so, we've got the, so, we've got the, so, we're looking for an interim, we need, we, so I'm gonna-
We need to get the posting out as fast as possible for the, just the-
Yeah, for, for the, for the permanent.
Because unless you think we should wait on either an organization or a hiring committee, I'm, I'm not a fan of a hiring committee for-
You can bring whomever on, you've got your job description, you've got the hours and the job, so-
The posting could go out, even if it could-
The posting won't go out on Monday. No, Tuesday is Monday, so, Tuesday.
Right.
It does need to be put in the paper, I guess, according to hiring by law.
Yep. So, so let's go ahead, I plan to get that out as soon as possible, regardless of if we're eventually gonna get some extra, extra, right, to find, to fill the position.
Do we, do we need to vote to amend this, the job description, based on Kelly's observations? Or can we just-
And the language that that provided, I pointed it out, that provided corrected language, or suggested-
So, so I'll make a, I'll make, why don't we do this, I'll make a motion that we adjust the job position as discussed and as annotated during the discussion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, you want to advertise the permanent one, not the interim?
So, I think what we want to do is, in the paper, advertise the permanent one. On our website, do we want to advertise for both a permanent and an interim?
I think that would probably be the best approach, yeah.
And just note that the interim is indefinite until a permanent is brought on.
Yeah.
And my thought is that, if we like the interim and they want to go permanent, that's, we're certainly open to that.
Well, and, and one of the things that, like, and, and it's not uncommon, right?
It doesn't repeat them from five before the-
Right, and I, but it's good to state that in the, it's good to state that- Right, and I, but I, it's good to state that in the, it's good to state that in the posting, right? That, that application is, application and fulfilling the role of interim will not, will not preclude somebody from...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Will not, will not preclude someone from applying for being appointed to the permanent highway superintendent position. So, Kelly, would you mind looking into the professional municipal headhunters?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I know two particular, um, companies off the top of my head, so I'll reach out to them and see if there's anyone else in the industry, get a feeling for what they need from us, and what the, what the timeline is, timeframe is.
Yeah. But, and, and I'm just, it's, I mean, we certainly can discuss it further, but I will just tell you, I'm not a fan of the citizen-run hiring committees.
Mm-hmm.
For interview process, I think one of the things I would like to do, though, is include Dennis or somebody from the, um, water department as part of the interview.
You should include the water department, and you shouldn't include the cemetery department, because there's a cemetery project that's gonna be going on, and, and they're, they interact with the highway department a lot, so it's important to have the key players involved.
And I think Dennis has a lot of experience that would assist us in identifying a good candidate.
I don't disagree with that.
So, okay. Is there anything else we need to talk about relative to this topic?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
Good.
All right, we have the plan of action. We have, okay, so we have the posting that's gonna go up for permanent. We have a plan of action for looking for an inter...
I kind of like the idea of doing a posting for both, because the, we don't want to find out that there's some technical aspect of the bylaw that we didn't post for the interim.
That's a good point.
Who hired, even though it's temporary, we want to follow the bylaw.
You know, that's a good point. So, so, you know, and it's, you know, it's a couple hundred bucks extra, but it's money well spent, so let's do that.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So, so, it's same job posting will go up as a permanent highway superintendent, and will also post for a, for an interim. Um, the interim will not, uh, the candidate hired for the interim will, that position will not preclude them from applying for the permanent position.
Okay.
And, and on the most immediate step, I will go down and talk, I will be talking to the people in the highway department on Monday or Tuesday. It's like, I'll try and see if I can set something up for Monday, but just because they don't come in until Monday morning, it's like...
But it's Columbus Day. They have a holiday.
Oh, oh, yeah, Columbus, it's Monday. So, it might not, it might not be until Wednesday then.
Wednesday is a Monday.
It'll be, uh, it'll, so, they'll get my, they'll get my request on Tuesday, and if they're available Tuesday, that, then I'll make the time. If they're not available till Wednesday, I'll come down on Wednesday. But, and then just talk to them about the transition, what needs to be done, and understand how we can make things work until an interim supervisor is there.
We also got the added, um, complication that, that they are a person short in the highway department, and besides their retiree.
We need to hire.
That they were attempting to tell, we need them to replace them.
And we don't want to, and honestly, we don't want to wait until we have a highway superintendent to get those...
No, so that's ongoing as well. Just, I just wanted to remind you that that is ongoing.
Yes.
Yes.
Are resumes coming in at all?
They are, but my understanding is that they, I haven't seen them, but that the people applying are not qualified. And if we want to qualify people, we're going to need the funding to send them to school, so.
Don, uh, you have, you're talking about interim, which I think is a smart move. Do you have a timeframe? I think you need to give somebody a timeframe of what interim is. Is it 30 days? Is it 90 days?
I think it's up to six months.
I think that's reasonable. It's like, with the, up to six, uh, expect...
I've seen interim town administrators stay for years, till they got, till they got the right fit.
But, but we, but I, I think the idea is to, uh, is to set the expectation and, and to say, it's like...
Do it for six months, and then revisit, or until someone's hired, or revisit it.
Yeah, and that, uh, with the possibility of extension.
Well, my thought was if you give 30 days, and you don't find somebody, then you do 30 days, you do another 30 days. It may take you six months to find somebody.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think for this, it's...
That's a great point.
Yeah, is that, I, I would say that we're, we would say that we'd be looking to bring someone on for, um, for up to six months, um...
And then revisit at the end.
Yeah, revisit at the end.
If, if necessary.
Yeah, but with the, and with the understanding that...
With potential to extend it, if the position is still...
Conversely, if we, if we hire something, if we, um, when we hire a permanent candidate, the interim, we're done with the interim.
Yeah.
It's like, and when, and when someone comes up, we...
Even though, even though you have an idea that he may not be interested, we would like to reach out to him and ask if he would like to. What do you have with the highway department?
It was, it was my bad idea, so I'll ask him.
Whether you talk to Mike and have him step up to do the day-to-day operations that they have.
Well, that's part, that's part of the discussion that, um, that Tom's gonna have.
That was my first suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the, that, that's the... So, here's the thing. That discussion is gonna happen anyway, okay? Now, with regards to the interim position, I don't know that Mike's a supervisor kind of guy. Might be interested in the opportunity, might not. Might have a right temperament for it, might not.
He might be a great fit.
Might be a great fit, might not. I, I don't know. I honestly have had only limited interactions with Mike, so...
I don't care about any.
Yeah, so, um, but, uh, but that's part of what that discussion is gonna be about, the day-to-day, until we either say, hey, yeah, he could be interim, or someone else can be interim, or we find somebody who's actually gonna fill the role, so. And I'll call Don.
Don't you got part-timers down there, too? That can step up into the, help out more than they do now?
Most of our part-timers have other part-time jobs, I think, that preclude them from expanding their hours, but we'd have to check.
I, I suspect...
We have a list of everybody that's worked.
I suspect if any of the seasonal or part-time employees wanted to step up, the, uh, the open rec would be their factor in doing that.
They would have applied for the opening position.
Yeah, that, that's my suspicion is that...
Because it's about the pay, it's the part-time.
Yeah, if they were interested, they are. They would have expressed that interest.
You never know.
All right, so, I think that's, so, permanent, interim, and the, and talking to the, uh, the existing staff there. I think that's it. Um, Kelly's gonna, Kelly's gonna look into the, um, recruiters. Beth's gonna contact Orion and Skillbridge.
Yeah.
And you're gonna talk to Don. Yeah. And Karen's gonna get, and then Karen's gonna take care of the posting. Anything else, other than...
Something, I think, and then you need another date to meet, so that this doesn't remain open-ended. You want to wait two weeks to do this?
No, let's go...
What's the, what do we need to cover before two weeks, or just...
No, we need to be on top of this, so, like, we need to get back together sometime next week after you've talked to the highway superintendent to see how comfortable you are with what the four to eight week plan is.
Do we want to tack that on to the Thursday meeting? We have an executive session.
I'm sorry?
End of month.
Oh, okay. So, you need to check the calendar to see if they're gonna do that.
Yeah, I prefer to do the, I prefer to do this in the evening.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Because, because I, I can't take that much time in the middle of the day. You've got, you've got 60 minutes start to finish, and that's it on Thursday. I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine. I, I just hope, I just hope it only come once, and I've, I've already, but I've already tacked on a, uh, a luncheon learned with Kathy about the grant process before our meeting Thursday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Just 30 minutes, but it's, it's like, I just took that as the opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, so next Thursday is open, if you're interested.
So, Thursday evening?
Uh, Thursday evening next week, yes. Uh, Karen, would you, uh, reserve the room and schedule that meeting?
Yeah.
So that we can discuss this matter in session.
This can be the only thing on the agenda, so it doesn't... Uh, we can, we can do a quick, hey, this is what we discovered, this is where we're at, what are the next steps?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, give us an open meeting in which to just further discuss this matter and deal with anything that's come up, evaluate our situation. Yeah. Hopefully, it'll be quick.
Just wait, can I say, ask something?
Um, yes, Mr. Keller, what's up?
Glad you had included. I want you guys ready to publish, I have to add, and I will put it up on our new town website for the newspaper.
Yes, Karen, could you make sure a copy of the job description gets, gets to Chris?
You want to shoot it out on Facebook, too?
Yeah.
I mean, that's usually what we do anyway.
Yeah.
All right. Great, thank you.
I'll share it on LinkedIn.
All right, and then, uh...
I've done it in the past, and so, that's, uh, we've gotten some...
Good, good outcome.
Good outcome, and some weird stuff from Ireland. Like, that's all I can commute, ma'am. I don't know if you want to come here.
All right, and then...
She thought it was the Daddalings, because it was a jog in Holland, so...
Oh, dear. Oh, that's funny.
And, and then I, I think we'd be remiss if we did not take this opportunity to thank Ryan for his service to the town over these four years. It's like, I know, it's like, it's like, what are we gonna do? It's like, yeah, but we do want to thank him for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And wish, and wish him well in his, in his next, in his next chapter.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I, I think we're done with this agenda item. And so, medics' signature. So, is this a, Karen, is this in English?
I'll make a motion.
It is not in English.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the rates for the, the, um, medics' insurance.
Can I ask, uh, do you need to take a vote to accept his resignation?
No. Can they stop me from quitting?
All right.
Yeah, we quit, we quit doing that.
They acknowledge it. They can acknowledge it. They definitely say thank you. They send a letter, saying thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But, there's nothing they, they can't say, you know what, we're not accepting this. That's where it's sorry, you can't, so...
I know, it's part of practice, but it's not necessary.
Could we, um, let's see. Would it be appropriate for us to, um, to announce this, that he's resigning and wish him well, or is that just not done? I, I'm just, what's the practice?
We do that.
You just did that, huh?
That's what you did.
Okay, I, I was thinking something, I was thinking something more that people would see and be know about. It's like, no one watches.
We have not done any, uh...
Okay, then, 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 thank you, that's, that's what I needed to know. If, if there's not precedent for it, then I'm not going to start a precedent. And then, we're just acknowledging what health insurance is.
I was just thinking of a situation that happened in another town, mutually accept, vote to accept his resignation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Brian's resignation.
Uh, I will second the motion. All, all in favor who are not recusing themselves, please say aye.
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 All right.
All right, now, so, we're just...
So, I make a motion for Tom to be able to sign for us to accept the medics' rates.
Okay. All right, um, let's see. That's, um, so, we're just, are these in line with what we expected?
Absolutely not. Now you can close. And when I said, what happens if they don't sign it, they said, we're resigning anyway. This is just acknowledging that you have seen them.
Uh-huh. I mean, what are these, health insurance? They're all just health insurance.
It's, it's the retirement changes for retirees.
Oh, well, this is the retire, this is the retirement levy? Which line item in the budget does this come out of?
Insurance. General insurance.
This is general insurance? Okay.
I thought it was under, it's not under the health insurance?
Health insurance is under general insurance.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Oh, is general insurance a category, or...
Insurance, yeah, insurance and other, uh...
And other...
So, we have a, a, a workers' compensation line.
Yes.
We have a general insurance line, which includes property and health insurance.
Okay, so this, okay, so this is, this isn't under the, the retirement assessment. This is under general insurance.
No, this is not, no, this is, this is...
No, no, no.
Yeah, this is not Worcester, this is not Worcester, this is not Worcester County Retirement. This is under health insurance.
Okay.
Okay, because the retirement assessment is full now, so terminology matters.
We have 15 minutes until...
All right. All right, uh, let's see, all right, so we have a motion and a second. I ask some questions. All in favor of confirming acceptance of the rates, which we have no control over, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, all right, and so, okay, I've signed...
Do the community club request, because that's Saturday.
Yes, okay, um, can I have a, uh, motion to take, um, item number seven next, which is out of order?
Give a motion to take item seven next.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor of taking it out of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, thank you, Kelly, and so, as we mentioned, the Apple Country Fair, uh, let's see. So, they're just asking us to prohibit street vendors from, uh...
This is their, I guess, this is the normal every year?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. I know, skateboards, the bikes.
Yeah.
And I, I do want you to make note of one thing, since the highway department's not in tomorrow, even though we didn't highlight this, is that Chief Martel did ask for the whacker to come up to the green on Friday.
Yes, he, he preemptively made arrangements with the highway department to ensure the Apple Country Fair would run as usual.
Okay, perfect. I just want to check. So. Okay, and then, um...
Yeah, what is the whacker?
It's a little tiny forklift thingy that we have that has a whole bunch of different, it's the same thing that we use to, like, clear the sidewalks.
Okay, okay.
It's a great little, like, multipurpose, slightly smaller, bigger than a bobcat sort of thing that we have, but it's got wheels.
It's a bobcaddy thing?
It's a bobcaddy thing.
Okay, thank you. That tells me what I need to know.
Yeah. It's not a skid steer, but it's about the same size, and it's got a bunch of attachments.
Cool, is it on tracks or wheels?
Wheels.
So, without this, a, a, like a food truck that has a license in Brookfield would be able to pull up on the Apple Country Fair and, and horn in on their, on the vendors who may be there.
And dilute the profits for the remaining food vendors.
Yes.
Okay, in the interest of full disclosure, I don't think it precludes me from voting on this. I'm having, uh, a, a not-for-profit citizen organization is gonna be set up on my lawn because they weren't allowed to pay for vendor space from the Apple Country Fair Committee, so. But I don't think that that qualifies under this, because they're not a vendor.
Okay, I...
No, that is not a vendor, that's correct.
All right, so, I, let's see, so... I mean, I will take a motion that we prohibit, um, all street vendors not associated with the, uh, Apple Country Fair, um...
That we suspend, I'll, I'll give you a motion that we suspend the operation of any, uh, vendor, food, like, street vendor permits inclusive of food permits of, within the town of Brookfield along the area of the common for the day of the Apple Country Fair.
She, yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm, I'm making a motion that we suspend any, uh, street vendor license not associated with the Apple Country Fair, for the day of the common.
Yeah, only, only we suspend.
Yeah.
Do you want to suspend it for all of Brookfield, or...
Well, for the area of the common.
Yeah, I know, but the, the, the request written down is all of Brookfield, which strikes me as...
I think it's the area of the common, because if somebody wants to do something out at Oak Home, I really don't care.
Well, no, it says on the common for the day.
Yeah, on the common for the day in the request.
Oh, that's at the end, that's, I missed that part. Okay.
Now, I, I'm not sure that we can suspend bicycles and skateboards.
In the common, you said.
Okay, all right, so then I'll make a discreet motion for, to suspend the usage of bicycles and skateboards on the common.
Well, we have two motions that...
For the day.
So, can, can we go with the motion about the, um, vendors first?
Sure.
All right. Can I get a second?
Sorry, man.
All right, all in favor of, um, preventing vendors not associated with the Apple Country Fair from operating in the area of the common on Saturday, October 7th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and the other motion?
The other motion is that we suspend the use of bicycles and skateboards on the common on October 7th for the Apple Country Fair.
All right.
Sorry, man.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, road closures, I don't think we need to approve that, and the, uh, whacker, we don't need to approve that. And we announced that. Did we do everything they asked us to do?
It appears to be not.
So, since we have Mary Lou in the room, can we just keep going with eight?
I was just gonna say that. Can you take the next one out of order?
Yeah, I make a motion that we take, continue on with eight.
Particular version, say.
Sure.
You got a second? You've got a motion.
Okay, uh, let's see, uh, okay, uh, all in favor of going out of order with the, taking number eight next, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, let's see, so, uh, I think we just need, I don't think there's anything for us to do, except, yay, Mary Lou! So, can I get a motion to that fact? So can I get a motion to that fact?
Uh, I make a motion to acknowledge Mary Lou Knight is appointed by the Board of Trustees to serve on the Board of Trustees for-
The Library of Trustees.
For doing that, for the Library of Trustees.
Sorry. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Mary Lou. All right, and so now that brings us to six, signboard on the Common. So, um, I've been approached by, I, I've been approached diligently by a citizen about the signboard on the northwest corner of the Common, diagonally across from the library. Um, the, he, he can, he reports it as an ISOR, um, and so the, uh, the question becomes, do we have a use for it, do we have a need for it, or is it an ISOR that we want to take down, since it's on the Common that's within our purview? And Beth, it's probably with, you can probably see it from your front window.
I can.
What's your opinion of it?
My opinion of it is, if we made better use of it, it would be perfectly fine, but I don't think that we actually leverage it for what it's intended for, which is to inform folks that are driving by about what's going on in town. So, um, I-
I mean, that's fine, I, to my mind, I, I'm, I'm inclined to announce our intention and then to take a final vote on this in two weeks, and that was-
Why don't we hold a public hearing and see what needs to be-
What intention? What's your intention?
That's fair enough. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself, but our-
So, so, so-
I know, I know, but I'm, I'm, I'm presuming that, okay, in the presumption that means, it's like, I don't know.
So, so, who, so I can tell you, well, first of all, first of all, the cultural council used to list like all of the, all of the, like, like, during the month that we have the bands, like the concerts on the, on the Common, they typically, they used to list that there.
Yes.
Um, we used to actually post when we had elections or other events coming up on there, um, or they'd roll out the other sign, right? Um, so I think the question is, is if it's gonna be there, let's use it, if we're not gonna use it, then take it down.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing, something from going back up.
Right.
This is just the ti- the effort and expense of putting something back up.
Put it up, take it down, put it up.
My thought is that if we're-
Well, we were given the sign by the schools with the letters that they used to have, creating a new one that's in the basement that has not been put up yet.
Right.
Want usable outside sign.
Right.
Got one in the basement if you want to put it up.
So maybe we replace, so maybe replace the, the one that's out there with one with movable letters that we can actually put up information on?
Yeah, I'm not sure how well that's gonna play with the, with the petitioning citizen and the historical commission, but we can, but that doesn't mean we can't do it.
What is the historical commission, what is their interaction?
Their, their, uh, my, my projection is that they will feel that it is a, um, it doesn't fit in with the historical character of the Common.
Let's do this, let's, let's-
I think, I think a hearing makes sense.
Let's, let's do this, one of two things, or, or both of them, okay? Either do a public hearing, or let's send out to all of the departments and committees, not just the department heads, but the committees, to say, do we need to sign, what should we be using it for, and if we're not gonna use it, should we take it down? And get input from the committee, let's at least get input from the committee chairs and the, the department heads. Because, you know, I do feel like we don't use it much, but I don't know that it necessarily needs to come down, I think it's a missed opportunity personally. But, and then, as part of that communication out, see if they think that a movable letter sign, like what we had from the school, would actually work better there, and then if the historical committee wants to say, oh, no, don't do that, then they can let us know that at that point in time when we solicit input. And do you want to do a public hearing, or, I mean, I was being kind of flipped, because I figured that's a decision, putting a sign up or taking it down is one I think we probably could make on our, on our own, but I think we want the stakeholder-
Let's, let's, let's see what the department heads and committees say back, and then we can take, we can take it from there.
Okay.
All right, I don't think we need a vote for that, and so...
Five minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the select board minutes of nine nineteen, five twenty-two eighteen, eight thirty-one twenty-three, and nine nineteen twenty-three, and nine twenty-one twenty-three.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes so listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and acknowledge the fire department reports.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the receipt of the fire department reports, and do you have any of the great anniversaries on there that we can announce? Because I don't have a copy with me.
Um, let's see, let me find them. Board of Trustees.
It said all of that says, um, I'll give the question of the department.
When did- Reports minutes of the departments, thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, let's see, anniversaries, none for July, for August, we have Lieutenant Jeff White, um, twenty-two years, firefighter Sean Daniels, three years, and firefighter Stacy Courtney, one year, in this, in the August report.
Awesome.
Yes. All right, um, I heard a motion to accept the report, did it, was there a second?
Sorry.
All right, thank you. All in favor of accepting the fire department report, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and that is, uh, let's see, correspondents, Disney Channel updates, uh, correspondents, almost done, almost done.
And then I actually, I actually-
Are you sure you're supposed to stop what you're doing and address the motion?
Okay, all right, uh, let's see. Could you withdraw a motion for just a moment while I-
I would draw the motion.
While I, while I handle correspondence, thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, let's see. And charter is saying, hey, we worked things out with Disney, we don't know how mu- they don't tell us how much money it's going to cost them, but we know it's going to cost us, and all the Disney properties are back on cable TV.
Yay.
Hooray! All right, Beth, hit us.
All right, oh, I do have one, I do have one other item, that's a, it's actually correspondence. I received a contact, and we can put it on an agenda for another day, but is there any way for us to, um, I got a communication from a citizen asking if there's a way for us to get the state to actually mow the area that is the sidewalk, like, uh, in front of the state, basically from around where the state troopers are down to Clambox, because you can't hardly walk in that area, but the state's not really maintained in that area, to see if we can, I would have asked the highway superintendent, but I've heard about it after probably his concern so much anymore, and it's one of those areas that we probably shouldn't be maintaining, but the state is probably supposed to, so, I don't know if we have a way to-
You've had success with Men's DOT, you get that popple repair, so maybe you can reach out to your contract.
Yeah.
But that's it, I've got some personal correspondence from somebody about it, so.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, so, all right, excellent, thank you.
And then a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Can I go to a point of order? Did you catch through number nine, or did I miss that?
Uh, number nine.
We did.
Yes, we approved the slide board minutes.
At the beginning, okay.
No, we, no, we did it in order.
I did it so fast you didn't hear me.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so we have a motion to adjourn and seconded, I declare the meeting adjourned at eight fourteen, one minute to go under our limit. Thank you, everybody.